We have the Emergency Management Committee meeting. And I had a Trails for Creston Valley Society meeting in there as well. But I sent the wrong words. I'm just pulling a blank on the date, but it was in the last two weeks.
The others, Elton Baldwin, AKBLG as well, but I'll take too much care of that.
I had a Creston Valley Community Housing Society meeting today, so it was me recording.
Elton Aries.
And the AKBLG, which I sent to another company.
With your kids?
Yeah, with them.
Alright, I request a motion that the verbal and written reports of Council BBC. Council, second Council, all in favor, motion is carried. We will then, also there were, amongst that was the RDCK Board Headlights, which are headline, yeah, headlights.
Highlights.
Headlights. So they are also on the agenda for people to read. We will then proceed to our committee as a whole, and I would ask that a motion that council resolves itself into the committee of the whole. Council Isler, second to Council Dumas, all in favor, motion is carried. We go on to our committee of the whole business. The first is council direction requests from the Director of Protective Services regarding support for Survivals of Sexual Crimes Working Group. Asha, agree that you?
Actually, I'm going to speak to your worship.
Okay.
Asha did all the language.
You take the glory.
She deserves all the glory. So this came to us through the RCMP, where there was some identified gaps and barriers in supporting sexual assault survivors. And the idea to start a formal working group was started. And, you know, so some of the things, you know, why this came to light was in the report, we talk about, you know, the lack of storage, complicated chain of command within our community. And the ability, you know, of the, at the hospital for, for, you know, train people to do these types of assessments. You know, so were some of the things that kind of triggered this, you know, group to start, to start to highlight, you know, what can be done to better serve the members of our community. And so, you know, similar to like the situation tables that we're talking about and bringing together stakeholders to support this. You know, the town and through their emergency management program and our coordinator would take the co-chair lead along with our communications coordinator, who can help in that role, but that's also this, this project is close to her as well. Obviously, our representation from the RCMP. There is a coordinator, Sexual Assault Forensic Exam Coordinator through Interior Health. We saw she provided a support letter, Kalen, we thought was going to be here to answer any questions, but we're not seeing her yet, so she must have gone. Right up. Mental health and wellness counselors, community health facilitators, you know, representation from, from other local groups like Valley Community Services, Community Care Society, Victim Services are, you know, is going to be involved. And then, and then through Tanaka and Baskett be involved as well. So a very wholesome group to look at this and, and start to, you know, hopefully come up with some plans to overcome those barriers. And so we're just presented the information as to what we would like to do and be part of this committee. Obviously, there is, you know, some work and time that Asha and Randy will put into this. But you can see it's a pretty wholesome group. And so, you know, we would like to come back to you with a request for decision to formalize and pursue this.
Elton Baldwin.
I know. I have to say, if I put on my professional hat, this really was, is like 25 years of my career in Creston. His advocacy for sexual health and wellbeing and victims' support. So I'd like to make plea to consider a counselor sitting on that table. I have a lot of experience with the SAFE program through IH. And there are a couple of stakeholders that I don't think you guys have identified, that I think you want to consider having at the table. His disclosure, usually the hospital is the last place where a disclosure will take place. And we have some really good programs in town that are usually where those disclosures happen first. So the HAB at the high school, options for sexual health clinic. Physicians, I know, I think we have, you know, I've worked so closely with two female physicians in town around advocacy for women's rights and victims' rights. So looking at including some of the physicians would be really valuable too, and I know they would give time something like this.
Yeah, absolutely. And Asha's taking notes on any of the configurations. So, so those are great suggestions. And, you know, as far as I remember, council sitting on the committee and stuff like that, I'll defer to, you know, as the CAO, I'm sure that will be possible.
It could be in a huck.
I guess a decision would have to be made there. And, you know, yeah, identifying those stakeholders is important, so.
Any other questions?
No questions, but I think this is great. It's the direction we want to go in, being to facilitate conversations. And, and that is a good place, I believe, for, for the town of Creston to be to facilitate, and, and that's wonderful. And so thank you for, for bringing this up and, and all your work. And I realize staff time is going towards it, but it's, it's under our community safety and our strategic plan, so I think this is great.
It works.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
I think it's a key item, our desire to make our community feel safe and supported and appreciate the work that you've done here. And so I will just, this is a recommendation, correct? So the recommendation then is that the committee of the whole receives a report regarding Support for Survivals of Sexual Crimes Working Group from the Director of Protective Services, and that the committee of the whole recommends staff to prepare a request for decision regarding the Support for Survivals of Sexual Crimes Working Group for council consideration at an upcoming regular council meeting. So we're good with that recommendation? And if we're also good with having our council representation with someone who has expertise on it?
Your worship, I would, I would suggest not. It's a working group and first as a committee, so this is not about political advocacy. This is staff members from agencies that are working to try to get something completed. It's not to diminish any of your attorneys or whatever, but, you know, this is very much about active operational work. You know, our staff are there to support an administrative side, the other staff are there to actually, to, to get certain things done. I think that what it does do, again, nothing taken away from you yourself, but just a member of council that may present a little bit of a challenge about some of the information sharing they share at the table and that. You know, or that perception there of especially with the RCMP, interior health. So we, we did make a very conscious decision to make this a working group that was staff driven. And staff from all organizations is not about a political advocacy at this time. So I would respectfully request that we just continually delay the planning as it's presented.
The political, there will be strong support from all of us.
And just add to that, that does not mean if something comes up where there is an advocacy role that the working group recognizes, that advocacy isn't brought to the elected officials and, and done. It's to keep the lines clear of governance versus work.
If I may, your worship, Kalen just walked into the gallery. And so we're just coming to end here. Everyone's approved it all, but if there's any further questions, then we have a representative professional there to maybe answer. But I think, I think council's good.
Yeah, we do have strong support for us to proceed with this as a council. And so we feel that's an excellent addition to our community.
Great.
And I think most of the questions, very few we had, have been answered, but we appreciate your presence here.
Good, thank you so much.
That was quick, eh? Okay, we'll continue then with council direction requests from the Director of Community Services regarding rezoning applications for 16th and 20th Hood Road. Thank you, your worship, both council.
This is new. Hello.
Hello, Mr. Comer.
Okay, that was interesting. The orders of 16th, 20th Hood Road, that's Carlyle Blair Hansen, present in the gallery, have submitted a rezoning application to rezone their property from R52, which is rural residential to commercial neighborhood with site-specific permitted uses in order to develop the property for commercial purposes. The Jazz, the first phase being to convert the current shop building to a hair studio, fitness studio and retail space. And then a couple of other phases involving new buildings and structures, a spa and wellness center. Staff have evaluated the application and recently consulted with our legal team. We determined that their request is not deported by the official community plan, nor does it meet the fire flow requirements stipulated in our Works and Services bylaw for commercial development. However, the specific uses being proposed for Phase One appear to be in compliance with the National Fire Protection Association standards for fire flow. And the applicant appears to have preliminary neighborhood support. So there is a route for them. So to proceed with rezoning, the OCP would need to be amended and to change land use designation to general conversion. Rural residential wouldn't, wouldn't work if we couldn't find a way to make that drive. You know, so that's a, that's a big process in our department, public notice, signage, public hearing, all the regular official community plan amendment stuff. Additionally, to address the Works and Services, council good issue upon application, a variance, a development variance permit to allow for varying the Works and Services by law. If we were to do that, then we would, it would be necessary to put a covenant on the title of the property, limiting the development to the, and to ensure basically that any future development was still, had the right fire flows for it. Basically, our Works and Services bylaw considers any commercial development at all on a property. So, you know, a car wash is, is part of that, right? You know, a big commercial development is, is considered in our Works and Services by law, which is why there's the ability to vary that. So it's, it's a, it's going to be a significant process to get to the point of making a decision there. If council does not support the application, doesn't require additional information to make that determination, you can deny it now. Or if you're neutral or, or, or see that, you know, there's potential, you can refer it back to staff. We can work with the applicant to submit the complete application package that includes the official community plan, the development variance permit application, and the covenant to bring forward, complete with, you know, the assessments on, you know, the fire flows and, you know, all the information required to back up that kind of change. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions council might have.
Elton Baldwin. What I couldn't see is in the CN designation is, does that prohibit residential development from that point on? And if they wanted to build a, a building that had accommodation for that?
Residential is still permitted in the commercial neighborhood zone. The way it's written, it's limited to the owner or caretaker of the property.
Okay. Elton Baldwin.
Can you just, like you've outlined the steps for an amendment to the OCP, but what does that timeline look like? Is that a year?
I would hope not. It depends on a number of things, but typically we'd be looking at, I have to refresh my memory, but somewhere four to six months likely.
Elton Isler had a comment. Yeah, that's, that's the easiest route. It seems like a great business plan, and they've already created a successful business out there in a short time, so whatever we can do to.
Yeah.
No, that's very important.
In just reading this over, we, we're talking about four phases. So this process would cover all four phases, rather just the first phase, and then we have to go step by step?
It would certainly cover the first phase, and the covenant would be structured in such a way that it would have to be evaluated at the next phase.
So there's a step by step.
So the infrastructure has to support any building that happens for fire flows. And so, you know, if the Phase Two, you know, we get the engineering done and, and, you know, calculate those fire flows. If it's determined that it would work without further upgrades, then there you go, you can go ahead. If it doesn't, then upgrades would have to be made before further development of the property can occur.
Any further questions? Yeah, I'll read out the recommendation, we'll see if we're all good with that. That council received the council direction request titled rezoning application 16th, 20th Hood Road for information. And further, that council referred the application to staff to request that the applicant withdraw the zoning amendment application for 16th, 20th Hood Road and resubmit their proposal inclusive of an official community plan and zoning amendment application and a development variance permit application for council consideration at an upcoming meeting. We're good with that? All right, we are good with that, thank you. Next, we have council direction requests from the Director of Community Services regarding street closure requests for the color line.
June 28th is being requested by Julian Camel, doing Valley View, or on behalf of Valley View, Bell and Copen Ford and Los Independent Grocer, to close a portion of Hillside Street north of the rec center from 16th to 20th, from 2:00 to 2:00 PM to 10:00 PM in order to have a starting event and finishing event spot for the, for the color room. In order to do that, we'll certainly be in touch with, I'll have them be in touch with all of the property residents up there and, you know, get their feedback, bring it back to council for, for a decision based on that feedback. If council wants us to proceed beyond this point, then that's what I think is.
This is the second annual, so we basically did it last year too.
They did, yeah, it was a different route. There was no street closures involved last year.
Do you have no questions? I read the recommended, recommendation that council receives in May 13th, 2025, council direction request titled street closure request color run for information from the Director of Community Services. And further, that council directs staff to prepare a request for decision regarding the street closure request for council decision at an upcoming meeting. Good? Okay. Our next item then is council direction requests from the Director of Corporate Services regarding mayor and council coffee talks.
Thank you, your worship. So you'll recall last year we adopted our communication strategy, and one of the short-term implementation priorities was, and that was the council coffee talks. So those are informal sessions that were, the public has an opportunity to come and chat with council. So the communication coordinator and myself have put together just a bit of a proposal for council's consideration. And the first being proposed attendees, so the mayor would attend, and that up to two counselors per session with the idea that we would try to make sure every counselor has an opportunity to be available there. We would invite senior fire and police staff, which is consistent with what has happened in the past when Mayor Toyota did the coffee talks. But that can be open for discussion too, depending on emergent issues in the community and best fit there. And then an open invitation to members of the public. We'd like to schedule them quarterly with times rotating throughout the day to make sure we can capture counselor availability and different resident availability. So we could do morning, afternoon, evening, and then a little bit later on in the evening. And hopefully commencing in July of 2025, if everyone's comfortable with that, for locations. Your communications coordinator will organize the venue and try to rotate through doing a mix of businesses and public facilities, so parks if it's nice in the summertime, so we can take advantage of our facilities. We'll make sure that it goes out in our newsletters, crescent.ch, you said that, and really try and get it out there to as many folks as possible. And then corporate services will support it. The venue rentals will vary, but we estimate it'll be about 6,000 to 2,000 annually, depending on where we book. So that's why we'll try and put some parks in there to do a bit of cost savings. That's kind of the, the outlined flow of it. You know, there is benefit to doing it, it's a different tool, we have a lot of formal written communications. So those coffee council talks provide an opportunity for one-on-one and informal relaxed environment. I think in the past, one of the considerations that the CAO put into the report was you tend to get the same group of people over and over again. So hopefully rotating through times of it might help broaden it. But the other portion of this is, is monitoring attendance and sort of emergent things and bringing back report early next year to see how effective they were and if it's worth continuing on for another year.
Questions? I do think because we put out a town newsletter, advertising it in the town newsletter, does reach a lot of people here. And perhaps it won't be the same group every time because of that. And so I guess I'm optimistic, but I really do like the idea. I think it is a, is a great way to communicate, because one-on-one communication is still the best form of communication. So then the recommendation is that council receives the report titled council coffee talks dated May 13th, 2025 from the Director of Corporate Services. And further, that council directs staff to proceed with the implementation of council coffee talks. You do that? Yep, I am too, thanks. And that's all for committee of the whole, so then I would request a motion that council rises from committee of the whole. Council Dumas, second to Council Aries, all in favor, motion is carried. And now we go on with our division reports. Corporate administration first is request for decision from the chief administrative officer regarding the Creston Valley Regional Airport Master Plan.
Thank you, your worship. So I realized a little bit of a lengthy report, and I want to cover some of the highlights and challenges with the complexity of this master plan compared to a number of others. So, you know, first off, master plan's sort of covering the 2025 to 2044, it's kind of a 20-year vision for that airport, which really serves as a strategic framework for governance, administration and development of the airport over the next 20 years. And, you know, and, and keeping the focus on what is it to our community? You know, how does it help us with public health, safety, tourism and economic opportunities? One of the, the important things was when we did the master plan, we looked at, you know, sustainability, what, you know, as we invest money in the airport, you know, what are the opportunities for sustainability? Is there a sustainability model for the airport? Which was answered pretty clearly, there, there won't be, but that's not why we have it. And, and so we really answered some of the social value questions of why it's important to the community of the valley to maintain that. So some of the highlights of the master plan itself, as we certainly go over a number of infrastructure enhancements, which includes, you know, runway extension and facility upgrades. And again, the runway expansion isn't, isn't because, you know, there's going to be new planes or new opportunities. It's really just to address the issues with our current medevacs, for example, in size of planes that they are landing. It does add a little bit of opportunity, but that's not the, the sole reason in itself. There is a little bit about financial sustainability and sort of trying to balance that public funding with some of the revenue from leases and user fees. You know, so for example, there is an opportunity for, for landing fees. Will that generate money to make the airport sustainable? No, not by a long shot, but I mean, it, it, every little bit helps. Community engagement certainly talks about improving some of that community engagements, or a community can sort of understand that social value of the importance of the airport. So, you know, when we're applying for grants or we're managing the assets out of there over the long term, it really should, you know, have a little bit of a community support or an understanding of why that investment's important to our community. As well as we did take a little bit about environmental stewardship, both sustainable practices and minimizing environmental impacts out there. Because, you know, again, the property in the airport belongs to the town of Creston, and while we have somebody else operate it, that does not, you don't get to delegate your liability away, you always get to maintain your liability. So what they do out there does matter to us. So as council knows, we had the plan developed by HM Arrow, and they, you know, worked on it for better part of the last six, eight months. You know, they, they gathered input through some stakeholder engagement with the airport users, local government, as well as indigenous communities, or indigenous community. They did look at all our development plans and everything about the infrastructure out there and, and future for private hangars and that. They also discussed a lot about, you know, some financial strategies related to, to the airport. So they really did sort of explore that model of what opportunities were there. One of the things that come up was the issue though, and it, and it, and it really was the start of the master plan as well, was it really about the governance structure, where the town owns the airport, while the airport is, is managed by a society. And then conversely, is that a grant and aid is provided by the regional district for a shared service to get into. You know, so there's, there's, the town, you know, can face some exposure risks from a society's operational decisions. And then because of the lack of a formal agreement regarding the financial contribution from a regional district, there is risk there. In other words, is that, you know, you're one election away from having an elected official that decides to blow it up and I'm not, I'm not purbing any money to go to the airport. So there is that, that risk. As well as, you know, and what's, which really a key to that is that we do have this significant asset that we have to look after. If you go back to the financial plan about the, the asset management plan within there, and you look at the dollar figures of what needs to be invested in the airport over the next 20 years, it's pretty substantial. They did look at, from environmental considerations, you know, they did look at both green, most gas emissions and some recommendations to some transition for equipment out there. Bio, biodiversity protection, waste reduction, groundwater safety. So, you know, there was a little bit of a lens to that, and that's kind of built into some of the projects as well. They, they also, which, you know, again, and this is the, you know, part of the, the viability part of the airport itself. But they did, they did look at the tourism impact and business development opportunities. And while, you know, those aren't necessarily things that they see as, as an opportunity that's going to turn the financial picture or sustainability airport around overnight, there is still opportunities there, there is still some growth opportunities there. So at the end of the day, probably the, the one challenge that, that staff sees with the adoption of this is in considering the complexity of the asset management component of it and having a society operated. Okay, I'm going to take, take, take a step back. So when, when HM Arrow come in, when we, before they got to Creston and looked at the airport or did any work, you know, we talked about that governance structure, we shared our legal opinion about, you know, the airport as a set to the town and liability associated with it. After Ben was here, one of the things that he, he stressed to me quite heavily was the value that we're getting from the society's operations. He was really impressed, he's been to a lot of airports, you know, very similar size and small to medium days operated by societies or, or even local government. And he said the value that we're getting from that society is significant and, and is worth protecting. And so while the model of the town owning the asset with the society running it by contract with the town and this financial contribution by the RD, while it's unique and our lawyer wasn't able to find any other models like that, Ben did say, you know, it's worth trying to protect. Because, you know, the liability issues you have, can you strengthen that through contract? Is there, you know, staff support that can be provided? Is there, you know, but at the end of the day, you don't want to lose that because you're getting good value for that and it's not costing you much for what you're getting. So I kind of wanted to put that on there. So one of the, the, the challenges with this is that when we look at adopting that in its whole and being able to take as, like every master plan, being able to, well, in this particular case is that we need to get our, all the assets out there entered into our asset management system. Do an analysis of, of, you know, the quality of the assets, where they're at, put that timeline to them, come up with that financial plan over the long term. How do we balance it out between grants, save money through reserves and, and borrowing over that? You know, they try to, to put that into our, our asset management plan. This is not something that we're going to be able to just hand to the society with any success. You know, they're going to come to you and say, oh, the airport, the runway needs to be paved, there's a big hole in it and there are big potholes and stuff. You know, if we just left it. And so we need to, to come up with a way where staff are involved with enhancing an agreement with the society to allow them to continue to protect that relationship that's there and that value we're getting, but also kind of tighten up how the governance. But also kind of tighten up how the governance model works. Uh, so having the society uh, reporting to staff on a quarterly basis. Um, if there's needs that they need to have out there, um, or budget discussions, staff will work with them to develop the budget. Um, and then, of course, we we the town, uh, will need to put an agreement in place with the regional district for the financial contribution. So we 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 basically have agreements in both directions between the financial side and then the operating side. Uh, and then we really need to manage our liability in the assets in the middle. Um, I think the the opportunity with that is fairly, you know, like, like I think we we can build on the success that the airport as a group has had. Um, you know, we'll just have to assign a staff member to work with the group. Um, and of course, you know, have our manager of engineering get all the assets, assets in. Of course, we got some budgeting to do for. Um, sorry, so what's the word we're looking for for, you know, we're checking the quality of stuff? Assessments or? Advice. Yeah, we we need to, we need to have an assessment of all the assets so we can, you know, that'll cost some money and require some grant money from U B C M. To be able to to do those assessments and no different than what we do with. Yeah, condition assessment. Thank you. Uh, yeah, we have to do condition assessments of everything so that we can sort of go out there and look at the runway, for example, and determine, you know, what the status of it is, how long it's going to last for, and build that in there. And of course, then it's going to be staff that really need to work with the regional district for increasing that financial contributions. Again, we can't leave it to the society and hope that they they are successful. Um, so what I did was I did provide several options for councils. So basically from including uh, endorsing the master plan in full, um, through to phrasing its adoption or refining some specific aspects collaboratively. Um, and that's why I kind of wanted to put the bigger picture together for you is that the adoption of it, um, in in this particular case, adopting it all, uh, does have an impact to staff. We will be taking a little bit more work. Uh, like everything that when you take on something new, there's a lot more work at the front end than probably the the longevity of it, but I mean, we'll, even on the long term, it will have an impact because of, you know, there will be, you know, that constant meeting with that group, staff reports to the regional district for funding and staff reports to council. Um, you know, sort of managing that asset management. So.
Any questions?
I thought, you know, do you not feel there was enough of, um, an asset assessment through, um, the work that?
No, they they don't, it's termed as condition assessments. No, not even close. They, you know, condition assessments for for asphalt, for an example, um, you know, requires a a a fair bit of testing, including some engineering work and and geotech work to understand the base and all sorts of things. And so, um, there's a fair significant amount of work. I mean, what the the uh, consultant has done is just done a visual saying, well, they're, the runway looks okay. You know, um, it's not full of a bunch of cracks, which are visible. Um, but that does not certainly give you that longer term assessment. And what we're trying to do with condition assessments for uh, things like asphalt and and, uh, you know, buildings and all sorts of infrastructures, be able to say, okay, you know, if the typical lifespan for asphalt is fifty years, and I don't know if that's what holds true for runway, for example, uh, but if it's fifty years, you know, where are we at in that fifty-year cycle? Is there any, um, conditioning that we can do to the road, to the surface that extends a life? So sometimes you can do thin layers of asphalt on top and get yourself another twenty years out of it, you know, those kind of things. And all those assessments have to be done to understand what you can do and then you can start to apply, you know, how you're going to address that asset longer term. So.
Counselor Baldwin?
All right. Two quick ones. Um, one is, uh, the fuel tank replacement. It's said that they're end of life. Um, and they would have to be moved out. Isn't that a fairly large, uh, investment in capital investment we'd have to make almost right away?
Um, yes, uh, it would be. Yes, uh, that's a big question. Um, no, and I guess that's the importance of getting this into staff's hands as quickly as possible so we can start making those. I, you know, I I unfortunately can't tell you how much staff time it's going to take. I can't tell you what the cost of that's going to be. Um, you know, I think the good news, bad news story of, uh, the airport over the last fifteen years was that we were very fortunate, the good news was we were very fortunate to be able to have a society step in and do a really, really good job. Uh, the bad news was we also had a very hands-off approach with that society and and let them, you know, do what they wanted to do. And and again, good result, but there's things that have been missed. And so, um, you know, I think that's a matter of, um, you know, uh, being able to, and again, the liability is ours. You know, it's our property. So, um, you know, the sooner that we get into that to be able to determine what those costs are and come back to council for your budget cycle next year, and and not just council budget cycle, because again, you're in a shared service with regional districts. So it's really about getting the regional district shared service to find, uh, funds us. But, uh, uh, council as the middle is, again, it's your property, your liability. So, uh, we still need to understand your risks and liabilities. Uh, because there's a chance that the R D C K through the shared service may not fund it next year. Excellent.
So, and the second question kind of goes into that, um, it's a society and they're doing great. There are people that have been passionate about it, but we've seen societies fade. Um, and there's no contingency for what if the society becomes um, less than, less than functional? And is there a, is there a? Do we, do we intervene and and prop up this society? Do we have a plan B?
Uh, well, uh, it's a good question. I I think that, so right now the society's functioning and they're functioning well. And I think they, you know, again, the message from, uh, H M Arrow was to try to to maintain that value you're getting for as long as you possibly can. Um, I think to to answer your question, what would be plan B? Well, if you go, and I can't remember the page, I thought I wrote it in the report here, but, um, page sixty-something or whatever, talks about governance and it had like several options there. I think what you would do is go, if if the society started to fail, um, then, you know, you'd go back to that list and look at your options that you have. I mean, there's more than one option there. Um, and how you could sort of pick up the pieces and I don't think, you know, we would be propping up a society or anything like that. I think at some point is that if they weren't, uh, performing and the the liability risk was was increasing for the town, we would just need to step in. It is our airports and we would need to step in and and, uh, uh, take care of it until such a time we can put it in another operational model.
Okay, but rather than putting it explicitly into the plan, this is what would happen, it's probably better just to assume that if take the high road, presume it's going to work fine.
Yeah.
Thanks. That was it for me.
Any other questions? My assumption from reading this, and it wasn't really, um, verbalized today, is also in the funding that we would be looking at, we would also be looking at different types of grants. Because some of this, the funding here is very expensive for some of the infrastructure improvements. And so I'm assuming there are grants that we would be researching and trying to apply to this as well as 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 funding from the regional district and the town across them, is that correct?
Absolutely. I mean, everything, every, uh, service that we provide, we're always looking for alternate funding opportunities and grants. One of the challenges, uh, that Ben from H M Arrow had pointed out to council in presenting this is that because your airport, um, certification is is on the lower side versus the passenger. Forget that, I apologize to create the technicality, but registered aerodome versus a registered airport, I forget what they call it. Um, is that the funding streams, you know, particularly to the federal government and and, uh, is very minimal. Uh, there's lots of funding, significant amount of funding for if you're a registered airport, but for the registered aerodome, uh, you know, the funding is very minimal. And so he did say we are going to be up for a fairly, you know, fairly significant challenge for that paving if you had to repave that entire runway. Um, you know, that's going to be a challenge. That said, I think, you know, there, you know, these are opportunities, uh, to be able to to work with Columbia Basin Trust that funds projects. And and again, you know, I think that's the great part of the viability part of the airport. And we we built out that social value and be able to take to Columbia Basin Trust and say, this is not just about the town and the airport or anything like that. There's this significant social value here. So. So I think there's opportunity. Now the question becomes, you know, you're trying to raise eight million dollars. Yeah, Columbia Basin Trust is not going to contribute that much. And so it'll be piecing together. And I think that's, um, again, like all our assets in our asset management plan are balanced between a certain amount of reserves, uh, which we we have to start, uh, kind of, you know, having, uh, the shared service contribute to, uh, balance that with what we expect we can get for grants. So in in this particular case, I I wouldn't be planning that this would be a high-grant program. In other words, is with, we, I doubt very much we would get fifty percent grant money for an airport or a runway replacement. But we're very unlikely. Um, and so, you know, at most you could, you could plan for fifty percent and and it may include borrowing. And, uh, you know, in in every asset we have, we've kind of found it out that way, that there's a, there's has to be this balance. Because there's no way, based on our total assets that we own, there's no way that we could fund it all by savings or, and and you couldn't borrow it uh, to to pay for it. So it's, you you kind of have to have this balance. Then each asset's kind of looked a little different.
Okay, it's a lengthy motion, but I will read it out. Whereas the Creston Valley Regional Airport is a critical infrastructure asset that supports public health and safety services, including air ambulance operations, wildfire suppression, and search and rescue. And whereas the Creston Valley Regional Airport Master Plan, twenty twenty-five to twenty forty-four, has been developed to guide the airport's governance, administration, and development over the next twenty years, incorporating stakeholder engagement and alignment with the town's strategic priorities. And whereas the master plan emphasizes environmental sustainability, financial stewardship, enhanced community engagement, indigenous reconciliation, and long-term infrastructure investment. Therefore, be it resolved that the report titled Adoption of the Creston Valley Regional Airport Master Plan, twenty twenty-five, dated May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, from the Chief Administrative Officer be received for information. And be it further resolved that the Town of Creston Council endorses the Creston Valley Regional Airport Master Plan, twenty twenty-five to twenty forty-four, in its entirety, including all recommendations and implementation frameworks. And be it further resolved that the council directs the town administration to work collaboratively with the Creston Valley Regional Airport Society, the Regional District of Central Kootenay, indigenous communities, and other stakeholders to ensure effective implementation of the master plan's goals and priorities. And be it finally resolved that council commits to reviewing the master plan every five years, updating it every, updating it every ten years to ensure that it's continued relevance and alignment with community needs. After having said all that, who's going to make the motion? Counselor Holland, seconding Counselor Dumas, discussion. All in favor? Motion is carried. I think that's the longest motion I've got to read.
Yes, as an F Y I, I wrote this report knowing full well that I'm going to take it and hand it to the Creston Valley Services Committee. So I wanted a fairly robust, uh, motion that council passed for the committee for their regional district.
Okay, but then I have to read it again as chair.
We need people for that.
So we have the council, council action list on our agenda, um, before we make a motion. There's any questions on it? Counselor Holland?
Um, Mike, I, when we were at town A K B L G, um, one of the presentations was around amenity cost charges. And I just, um, it's very, like, it's new, it's new by, um, new act. Um, and so when I was looking at development cost charges by law, that, and the action is that, um, look for community engagement. I'm just wondering if if we should be looking at the amenity cost charges versus development cost charges.
I'm going to turn to our director of community services because he is, uh, well more swept up on that.
Yes, that's, they are two different things.
They are, yes.
Um, the reason that the amenity cost charges were brought in was because when the province brought in the bill forty-four housing changes, um, they took away, uh, municipalities' ability to negotiate amenities when they were considering rezoning of properties. And so to deal with that, they gave the ability for municipalities to say, well, you know, you have to improve this amenity or this amenity. Um, they're not infrastructure amenities. Uh, you know, they would be, you know, you you, more similar nature way you might require in a development permit in some ways. Or you might, you gotta build a swimming pool. It's a negotiation piece, except for it's more structured.
But it's an either or.
It's an either or.
You can't apply both.
Uh, no, no, sorry. No, you can apply it. Absolutely. Yes.
I I thought he was pretty clear that a development, it was an either or that you could, I.
That's my understanding. I could make a mistake.
Yeah, it was the lawyer that was presenting it.
It's, you can do both. They're they're very distinct in what you'd like to say. So you develop it, it's very infrastructure related to growth. Uh, amenities are very much like parks and uh, and and you can't take development cost charges and spend them on parks, for example, like everybody's versa. So, so they're very distinct. Um, and and it's, um, the director of community services had pointed out, when when the province changed it, there used to be uh, a patchwork of, um, agreements for, um, amenity clauses for people where they'd say, okay, well, you want us to rezone, not build us a park over here. Or or you have to contribute so much money. And it was just this patchwork. But when they took that away, then then really then the only way that you can collect through growth for amenities like new parks and things like that is through the amenity cost charges. And so it's, uh, basically what that, where that also requires is you have to have a plan, you know, for a park, you have to have a costed out. You know, and and then, of course, you have to bring it down to a formula based upon, it's very similar to development cost charges. But when subdivision takes place, how much is contributed specifically to the amenities cost charges? And to your development cost charges. So they're just completely two separate things. Uh, what they can't be is they can't be combined.
Right.
So they're two separate bylaws and two separate.
Yes.
And having one or the other doesn't require you to have the other.
I just thought it might be an opportunity since we're, we're still, we haven't moved forward with community engagement. And maybe look at it. Because if we are really looking at, you know, multi-dwelling structures coming into town, I think there is an opportunity because the amenities, the way he spoke about it, is a benefit for the whole community. And so that builder is putting out towards something that a whole community can can take advantage of.
The, the reason why we haven't seriously brought, um, amenity cost charges to council is primarily because we're having enough trouble attracting. So when we require these additional things, it it, you know, that's extra dollars that they have to just spend in addition to the costs they already have to come here to develop. Um, so it really works well in bigger centers with those strong developments.
Okay, I would then request the motion that the council action list be received. Counselor Perry, seconding Counselor Dumas, discussion. Just seeing all in favor.
Um, so with the amenity cost charges, like when we were talking about like social procurement, uh, where's a social, uh, what was the, what was the term for it? When, uh, we're requiring new builds to come in and then we can say.
Well, yeah, the social, the social procurement.
Yeah, it's social. So does that, that could be.
We can, I mean, we still do that. That's completely separate.
But it could be the, towards things like that.
Sure, yeah, yeah. Generally speaking, I mean, we haven't really had any big projects where we would have the opportunity to to sort of, um, sort of push that. Um, but I mean, you know, but that would be outside of, um, uh, a bylaw that's collecting upon subdivision of any shoreline or anything.
But it just could be like, you know, for pensions that are part for, you know, whatever.
Yeah, it's, yeah, what are you going to do for a container?
Okay, I will call the question. All in favor? Motion is carried. And who wants to finance Creston Valley Cycling Association Community Development Grant Application? Four thousand dollars for the Windham Mountain Bike Vale Network. Yeah, a conflict for me and I'll dash out for Ben. Don't ride your bike away, somebody.
Too much of a statement.
I'm sorry bothering your conflict is because you.
I am on the board.
And in the parade.
And in the parade.
All right, so, um, he was in front of you.
Dear Worship, under, we had another community development grant application come forward a few weeks ago. And so at that time I had asked the Director of Finance how much was in that budget. And it looks like of our allocation, there's about eight thousand two hundred and fifty. The town of Creston has assigned about seventy-five thousand dollars or has plans for that. Um, you had requested that I get in touch with Creston Valley Housing Society to find out how much they needed for their grant. And I haven't heard that yet. So they'd requested five thousand just to kind of put context around this.
So, um, from a financial point of view.
Sorry if I made, that was what we had left after, uh, for twenty twenty-four. We will be getting a new allotment about twenty-six thousand five hundred, um, for twenty twenty-five. So there would be more.
So is there their total grant request? Is that within the parameters set up, something that we would be able to give them?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, so then I would entertain a motion from someone that we authorize. Uh, whatever amount you feel should, but up to the total grant request.
How often do we get requests for this grant?
We pass that on seven. It's fairly infrequent, I'll be saying.
The the two that we've had is at normal. Uh, at least over the last four or five years, the only ones we've actually done in town, having budgets. And it is open to. To, uh, any project that the council, uh, agrees to.
And updates from Creston Valley Services are, um, that, um. You know, they're well under the way of making this a significant mountain bike trail with with some great connections. And so. This is sort of the the next step along and that and it has a large benefit for. Anyone who is very interested in mountain biking and and our community does not have a lot of good mountain bike trails, so. Therefore, I would entertain a motion. Counselor Dumas.
I'm happy to make the motion for the, um, amount that they're asking, the four thousand.
Second or?
My second.
Okay, second by counsel.
It's a, it's a very affordable. Way in the grand scheme of things to provide your community with free things.
But also, um, they are volunteering a lot of times as well into this. And so, um, this is supporting. The trail as well as their volunteer to to make it happen, so. So it's a worthy endeavor. Any other questions? All in favor of that? Motion is carried. Thank you. Uh, next we move on to Corporate Services Request. Happy to have you back. A request for decision from the Director of Corporate Services regarding the execution of the partnering. Agreement between the Town of Preston, Creston Valley Housing Corporation.
Thank you, your worship. So at a committee of the whole in April, the chief administrative officer took you through the partnering agreement between the Town of Creston and CBHC. The follow-up steps from that, we needed to provide our legislative notice, so similar to section twenty four and ninety four of the community charter. So those were completed on May second and May ninth. We didn't have any feedback from the public on the partnering agreement. Um, so at this time, and we would be just looking for authorization from council to execute our portion. The same request will go forward to the Creston Valley Housing Corporation Board to execute their portion, and then the partnering agreement is in place. And with the partnering agreement in place, then we can begin actually transferring assets over to them and providing them with support.
Yay. Counselor Holland?
Yeah, if we have, um, or not we, sorry. If the housing corporation were to look at that agreement and and have some questions and want to see changes. Um, like I'm just thinking, do we sign potentially knowing they may not.
Had an opportunity to review and they don't have any changes recommended. So we took a parallel report to them prior to doing our legislative notices. With a very similar recommendation that once those were done, they would come forward with execution. So, yeah.
Other questions? You read on the motion is that the report titled Execution of Partnering Agreement. And the Director of Corporate Services dated May thirteenth twenty twenty five be received. And further that the mayor and director of corporate services are authorized to execute a partnering agreement. Between the Town of Creston and the Creston Valley Housing Corporation. Motion two. Counselor Eisler, second and Counselor Aries, discussion. All in favor? Motion is carried. Yes, it is. Since that's a who does what type of meeting.
It is, yeah.
Next is the information report from the Director of Corporate Services regarding the public open house on June fourth twenty twenty five.
Thank you, your worship. I just found it an opportunity to let you know that we have revised the format of annual open houses. So that was another priority act, action in our communication strategy. We initiated it last year and we booked out a room at Creston, that district community complex. We had about thirty folks wander through, so not a bad turnout. We did have some good discussions there. But we were hoping to kind of modify the format to see if we can get more and diverse people coming. So. As it stands, that we have coordinated an event on June fourth from four to seven at a Kootenay Park. The departments will all be there providing government-related activity. So we have some election games and we have some, um, emergency management activities to do in recycling. We'll also have free hot dogs courtesy of the Creston Valley Youth Network and really try to just promote all of the activities that we do. The one thing that we haven't figured out is just if you would like a council booth, so. That's part of this, but we can reach out directly afterwards and see if there's any. Availability of councils to attend that and then set up a small activity to have at your booth as well. And staff are happy to coordinate that. So this is more just an information out piece to invite you and. We have, um, it on all our communications channels and going out in the counties. So we're hoping to have a fun event and staff are looking forward to it.
The council, that might be a good, um, or the council might be the segue to our public meetings, right? We come and see, see you to chat with us.
Yeah, I'll read the motion that the report titled Public Open House dated May thirteenth twenty twenty five from the Director of Corporate Services. Be received for information. Motion two. Counselor Baldwin, second and Counselor Holland, discussion. All in favor? Motion is carried and we can hope for an evening of nice weather for that. We can make a motion on that. Okay, next then is Community Services. A request for decision from the Director of Community Services regarding Community Development Grant Applications.
Thanks, your worship. Uh, these are four projects that were identified in council's twenty twenty five budget. And, uh, identified at that time is requiring or being recommended to be funded through the Community Development Grant Program. Let's downtown tree, uh, tree replacement, the Kootenay gateway signage. Um, Highway three, welcome to Creston sign. Um, relocating of it and then the new highway to, or welcome to, um, Creston sign on Highway three eight. Uh, so these are required more or less to, uh, be able to receive of those projects. Yeah, addressing questions, Counselor.
Counselor Baldwin? It took a quick one, um, the Kootenay sign, um, is that net of the, are we paying community forced?
No, it's separate, completely separate.
Good.
So I thought that's a lot.
My only question is, um, the welcome to Creston signs, one is amount of five thousand, one is twenty five thousand. Why is such a big difference?
Uh, because we already have the one that's five thousand. It's already, it's in the shop. The other one needs to be, it's a new, new bill of basically.
Right, uh, without any further questions, then the motion is that council authorize the submission of an application. To the RDCK for a community development grant in the amount of thirty thousand dollars for downtown tree replacement. That council authorize the submission of an application to the RDCK. For a community development grant in the amount of fifteen thousand for the Kootenay Gateway Sign. That council authorize the submission of an application to the RDCK for a community development grant. In the amount of five thousand dollars for the Highway three, welcome to Creston sign. And that council authorize the submission of an application to the RDCK. For a community development grant in the amount of twenty five thousand dollars for the Highway three A, welcome to Creston sign. Motion two. Counselor Aries, and then the Counselor Dumas, discussion. All in favor? Motion is carried. We'll go on then to request for decision from the Director of Community Services regarding reoccurring park bookings for party in the park.
Uh, thank you. Uh, so they had their first party in the park on, uh, May second. Uh, what I understand is a success. I don't know how many people were there or not, uh, but. It went ahead and, um, apparently we just fairly let the park open in time. Um, so the applicant had, uh, you know, mentioned that their last, last council made it, they were looking. To, uh, they're requesting the council would sponsor the event, um, basically to the the net of their booking fees. Um, overall, four events at one hundred dollars a pop, four hundred dollars total. So that is the request. On the table for council to consider.
Any questions?
Yeah, I don't know if it was just, it might have just sent to me, but Brian had put together a little video of it and, you know, it wasn't like. Really well attended, but but he he's a builder, you know, just like he does the music bingo and it took four months for it to. Get rolling and he's really got a, uh, really love for this, like it's his dream to have a a big community event like this. So, um, there's lots of kids there.
Nice.
Yeah.
I'm in favor of that.
There you are. Need a mover for the motion that council receives the May thirteenth twenty twenty five request for decision. Titled reoccurring open park booking for information and that council authorizes partner, partnership of the party in the park event. Is the amount of, and which being suggested, four hundred dollars from the advertising budget. Are we okay with that?
Yeah.
To be allocated from the council advertising budget. Somebody to mover. Counselor Eisler, second and Counselor Aries, discussion. All in favor? That motion is carried. And we'll go on to information report from the Director of Community Services regarding Shakurski Park, Jason Land Acquisition.
Thank you. Yeah, it's 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 hard because there's no address and you're trying to describe where.
But everybody knows the phrase.
Jason Land's acquisition. Um, yeah, just to give council the update that that, um, property acquisition is is now complete. Um, and we're expecting that, uh, one of our local community groups will be reaching out to council. Uh, requesting, you know, to partner on on building that connector trail.
Great.
Because you know who the group is, but.
The one two built the others.
I'm not going to put words in their mouth though.
And.
It it would, actually wasn't clear because the red part was outlined, but then there was the blue on the hillside. What what is that? What's the significance of that?
Uh, so, yeah, it was an interesting thing. So as we started going through this, we realized that. Glacier Drive, the right of way where the trail is, um, is actually not dedicated as road. It's its own parcel. And and it just runs through the middle of a different parcel that's split into two islands, basically. So in order for us to be able to acquire that property, we had to go through a result or a subdivision process. So what happened was the the blue property shown above and then the red property that were split off. And now the the red property is part of the trail property. So there's still the same number of lots up there. It's just that, you know, now our property is bigger and there's a smaller.
Cool. This was a private donation?
It wasn't even, yeah.
Was that the people that came with the my office that would you contact with?
Uh, no, a different person, a different person.
Very generous. That's awesome.
That's great.
There's no, but there's no question of attribution, right? It's not like Huskroft, probably we've brought in a name.
I would love to sing their praise, but they've told me that that is not an option.
We certainly won't turn that down. So the recommended motion is that the. Report titled Shakurski Park, adjacent lands acquisition dated May thirteenth twenty twenty five. From the Director of Community Services be received for information. Motion two, Counselor Holland, second and Counselor Baldwin, discussion. All in favor? Motion carried. That's another very nice thing to happen to our community. So you're still up, Joel, with the request for decision regarding zoning amendment by law number twenty twenty seven?
Uh, yeah, we have council seen this a couple of times now. This is the short-term rental primary residence for principal residence definition. Um, so council, uh, is able at this time to give a third reading and adoption.
Yes, I need a motion that the May thirteenth twenty twenty five report. Title zoning amendment by law number twenty twenty two, two zero two seven twenty twenty five. From the Director of Community Services be received. That zoning amendment by law number two zero two seven twenty twenty five be read. The third time by title and that zoning amendment by law number two zero two seven twenty twenty five be adopted. Motion two.
Sorry, your worship. If I may, could we please do from that, open May thirteenth twenty twenty five report. To third reading be done as one motion and then we'll adopt it as a second motion.
Okay, so we'll just eliminate the last part of that motion. We'll do it third time by title. Motion two. Counselor Holland, second and Counselor Holland, discussion. All in favor? Motion is carried. And then the final part of that, then that zoning amendment by law number two zero two seven twenty twenty five be adopted. Counselor Aries, second and Counselor Eisler, all in favor? Motion is carried. Uh, we go on to correspondence and before we start with what's on the agenda. I had a text from Chief Louis regarding the powwow and, um, he was wondering if there are counselors and myself. That could attend the powwow events. The the grand opening is the evening of the, uh, also the grand opening of Blossom Festival. So that I'm not sure if there are any, um, members of council that could attend that evening. Because most of us would be tied up with the, um, opening Blossom Festival. But if there is anybody, let me know and I will respond to him. The next day there is a, um, powwow. And I think it is ten days our parade and I think the grand entrance that day is one P M on Saturday. And then so I believe we'll be mainly tied up. And if not, if there's someone that could attend. And all the band and council would appreciate it. But further to that on Sunday, I believe it's again at one P M. There's another grand entrance and, um. If some of us could attend a minimum on that one, that would be great. And I know there was, I attended it last year. I'm not sure how many councils were with me last year.
We were.
So I think. But at any rate, um, if we can't attend the other ones and, um, as many that as can attend on the Sunday, I would highly recommend it and, um. If, um, I will just, go ahead.
There's also one at seven P M Saturday.
That's right, yeah. But is anybody available for seven P M Saturday?
I think so. Not quite.
No.
So if we have counselors that can attend Saturday evening, please do it seven P M and then again Sunday at one P M. And, uh, I will, I don't know if I can specify names at this point, but I'll let them know that we will, I'll do my best to attend those.
I can't be there Friday either, but I can be there Saturday or Sunday.
Yeah. And, uh, I think this is the first time that he's, that they have requested our attendance there. We we voluntarily attended and showed there. But I'm happy to see that they're hoping that we'll show up there, so that's right. Okay, next is request from the Chamber of Commerce to support twelve Daniel Dash for Trash. And the motion is that council authorizes a grant in the amount of a thousand dollars to the Chamber of Commerce. To support Dash for Trash on June seventh twenty twenty five. Motion two. Counselor Baldwin, second and Counselor Holland, discussion. All in favor? Motion carried. And this is one that we basically do every year. I think it was interrupted by COVID, but but other than that, we've been doing that for quite some time. And there's the mayor's invitation to Spirit of the Rockies Festival, June nineteenth to twenty twenties, to twenty second, twenty twenty five. And they're just requesting that if we could, uh, attend and or participate in the parade. I'm not sure if anyone's available.
I'm available now. I wasn't before.
Okay.
My way of strategy got changed.
So that would be, that would be taking our float and grabber, correct?
Yeah, and so we either get somebody, it because it really does take two people to get the thing together. So if I can get help from. Maybe the worst yard or something like that, depending if somebody's available. By the way, anybody else available?
I don't know.
Think I might be available.
Wait.
It's getting a little old now, but, yeah. And, uh, yeah, I I don't mind driving the truck up. I mean, it's not the issue. It's a matter of I don't want to do it all on my own. Yeah, it's a lot. It's a, it's a lot. Yeah, we get there about two. We go to an hour before the parade starts.
I'm gonna leave June twenty first.
So if you could make it, Counselor Holland. Is there any authorization of expenses?
I'll come up with, um, stack just to prepare that similar to last year's.
So if it's ready to drive, I that's fine. But if you have to put it together in the yard, that's, you get there five in the morning, so.
I can follow up with our Director of Infrastructure Services. And in the meantime, the recommended motion would be that council authorizes entry into the Spirit of the Rockies Parade. I can proceed to enter as in.
No, it's an absolute commitment from me.
Okay, I would like a mover of that motion then. Councillor Baldwin, second to councillor Isler. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion is carried. Next is the prostate cancer foundation regarding lighting up town hall in blue during the month of September. And I guess it requires us to have blue lights for one thing, I don't know if we do.
We do, because we light up town hall in blue for our girls' day, which didn't happen this year, so we do have the blue lights. So if council would like, the recommended motion could be that council authorizes the town hall to be lit up in blue light for the month of September. You can pick a day or a week or.
I went on the site just to see, do they have a date, if they say just a date? And I couldn't find anything, but I found a link on their site and they're encouraging individual homes to light up as well. And they have a massive supply of blue bulbs that they will send out or free um to households. So we are saying there are one blue light bulb per household. So we could light up our houses too.
Councillor Isler?
Um, yeah, I was just wondering, I, oh, we had a conversation was like last year about um lights on on town hall and looking into like installing lights that we could just always have there with different colors. And I remember what happened in that conversation.
I recall the. Yeah. But I, I'm just trying to think of what, you know, what, I think that, you know, we went and found some, just some inexpensive um ground lights to shine on the building for the blue light.
Yeah.
Um, they don't change color, do they?
They don't change colors, no.
We'd have to get different color bulbs. I think we were looking at gem lights.
Yeah.
So I would have probably had to actually go forward as a budget.
Yeah, probably ask them through the budget item, so. Perhaps, perhaps maybe we just re, we'll record that, make sure we can get that as a budget item. They do make, making little lights, projection type lights that are L E D that we programable and.
Yeah, and can just make it easier in the long term.
The quality is much different than the little garden we bought of it. Lights from Walmart were, but yeah, certainly could take a look at it. And when I say, you know, it, it could be probably not that much, it's just more than what we probably had budgeted.
Yeah, yeah.
Pretty quite doable.
And the other thing I would, I'm just trying to review this, is I don't see that there's a proclamation with this, is there?
Right.
No, but proclamations are at your discretion too. So if the mayor's interested in, mayor and council are interested in making a proclamation, that's certainly something. You can proclaim September as prostate cancer awareness month in the town of Creston.
Well, I would suggest we do that in support of the blue light, so people understand why we have a blue. But we're lit up in blue, so I'd be happy to declare that proclamation to, to draw more attention to this. So with that, I need the motion that council approves the, I guess, lighting the blue.
Yeah.
Add proclamation as well.
Yep.
Okay, motion two. Councillor Aries, second to councillor Dumas, any further discussion? All in favor? Motion is carried. We go on to the trails for Creston Valley invitation to Creston Bear Fair, June twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. And again, just a request for attending the, the Bear Fair at the Riverside Wilderness Park, correct?
Exactly, just an invitation for attendance, so just as a receipt for information.
Yep, okay. Motion is that council receives a correspondence from trails for Creston Valley regarding the invitation to Creston Bear Fair, June twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. Motion two, councillor Baldwin, second to councillor Holland, all in favor? Motion is carried. We go on to our active mayor's schedule. For May is councillor Isler, June councillor Horton, July councillor Holland, August councillor Aries, September councillor Baldwin. And without anything further, is there any questions from the gallery?
I just wanted to make a comment about the dash for trash. That last year, the garbage bags given out to the teams was actually more garbage than we cleaned up because our town's pretty clean, which is a good thing, but also like a kind of a weird problem to have. So we're meeting next week with the worry around some brainstorming on how we can dash for trash, but also maybe work on some other kind of cleanup initiatives. So if there is any suggestions and if that looks like you're cleaning up some graffiti or this needs to be cleaned or that, um, please send that information our way, so we can kind of change our scope and most garbage heads and more dashing for something else.
We could ask Dave just to, oh, not pick anything up.
Yeah. Make sure he gets a T-shirt. Yeah.
And I have a question for you, because we've talked about Canada Day. Are you aware of any community groups that are working to organize the Canada Day event this year?
Besides Canyon? No.
Yeah.
That's the only one so far. Um, in my correspondence that I gave to you, the Arts Council is interested in partnering. There was somebody else, maybe Rotary and Lions, I want to say. But I don't want to speak for that because she might smack me on the. But I think those were the ones that were really interested in, in something.
Yeah.
I know, I feel the same way, thanks.
And also, I guess through Creston Valley Services, we will be arranging, hopefully, transportation to Canyon for Canada Day day events with buses. So if all else fails, people can take the transportation to Canyon for Canada Day event. But it'd be nice to do it more in our community, especially this year.
Agreed, maybe with that transit piece, we can increase that accessibility and maybe encourage more of their planning.
Yeah.
It's a lot of work.
It is a lot of work.
Yeah.
We had also a sustained effort, which is not always possible.
Yeah.
Yeah. And thank you for that. Um, I guess we will then declare five minute recess and move to a closed meeting. And the motion is that the regular council meeting of May thirteenth, twenty twenty five be recessed at uh five twenty. And by the authority of the Community Charter, council moved to a closed council meeting with this meeting being closed from the public and our news media pursuant to section ninety one B. Personal information about an identifiable individual who is being considered for a municipal award or honor would be offered if provided if to the municipality on condition of anonymity. So motion two, councillor Aries, second to councillor Isler, all in favor? Motion is carried and we'll have a five minute recess and thank you all for attending. Thanks, Alan.